All right, well, we might as well get going. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:29. Item two, adjust agenda. Does anybody have any agenda adjustments?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and approve the meeting minutes from the November meeting. And I'll just wait for a motion from someone whenever anybody's ready.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
No, second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, you're not opposed. Motion is passed. Here's citizens. I guess we could skip over that one. Okay, item five, discuss proposed capital budget program. Martha's here to kind of go over with just sort of a draft right now, right?
It's still a work in progress, yes.
Okay, maybe, could you kind of go over for folks just sort of what a capital budget is, just roughly?
Yeah, so you have one from 2014, so it's pretty out of date by now. It's just basically a plan of the major expenses that the town expects to encounter and needs to plan for financially, make sure that there's funding there when the time comes. So, right now, we've got mostly the highway stuff, equipment, paving, structures, sidewalks. We still need to add some sewer and water. Those are probably the main components that are going to go into it. There were things that were planned in 2014 that haven't progressed really, the sidewalks especially. The Mount Scotty Regional Commission, who I worked for, did a sidewalk study in 2010, 2011. And a lot of that work still needs to be done, so.
Did that include the Proctorsville sidewalks?
Yes, both villages.
Oh, yeah, okay. Because I think, I wonder the sidewalks, Proctorsville, I think 2005.
Right, so I think maybe nothing's been done since then, pretty much.
Well, no, they were built, but they didn't extend them the whole way. They didn't. Good, how are you?
Good.
So, okay.
So, really, just a plan for the bigger ticket items in the town. So, they don't all hit at once with no sources of funding.
And I think that's the biggest trouble for most towns is funding needs as you go and planning for the future. I mean, you have to fund them, you can't just build them when they come up. So, I think we're trying to catch up a little bit on a lot of these funds, so it's going to take a little bit. That's why we're here and planning it out right now, so.
Yeah, I mean, the equipment's the other thing, in addition to the sidewalks, where there's a lot of equipment that needs to be replaced in the not-too-distant future. I mean, Rick has started on that, but there's more to come.
So, what do you think our biggest expenditure or need is for budget improvements or capital?
I don't know, we're kind of across the board on a lot of things. We're kind of behind on whether it's sidewalks, whether it's structures, equipment. I believe we have a pretty good plan going forward with paving now. We added a lot to that last year. But it's pretty much across the board, little by little. There's not enough money to do one project, let alone to continue to do projects going forward.
Tim, Mr. Chambers, Martha, how in the past was the planning commission involved? And what kind of role do we play in any of, in the capital budget program or anything? Do we look at the previous town plan or the budget and make recommendations to the select board? Or how is it that we're involved at all?
I wasn't involved in 2014.
Me either, I wasn't involved in that one. But as far as budgetary wise, not that big of a role. But this is through municipal planning grant. And part of this grant is to get the planning commission involved and have these meetings and do that. It's just the one, correct?
Right, to meet with planning commission and the select board and go over it and get your input.
Yeah, I think if there's anything that the planning commission would like to kind of see in the capital budget program, we can advise the select board.
So, what can these monies be used for?
Well, this is a plan. Part of the plan is going to be where is this money going to come from? Whether it's an annual appropriation contribution, as has been happening lately with equipment and paving. There are grants for paving and structures that you get periodically, but they require a match, so it's good to have in the process, I mean, available. And usually, the minimum match isn't enough to cover the cost of the project. So, although the match is 10% or 20%, it may need to be much higher than that.
Okay. When you say structures, what, give me an example.
You know, like a box culvert or something. You have several.
Not a house or a.
Right, no, no. Yeah, highway structures. Several recent hydraulic studies that have identified undersized culverts that, you know, maybe three or four feet wide, that really need to be seven by 10, for example. And.
And it's going to get very pricey.
Expensive undertaking.
Talking $400,000, you know, structures that we really don't have in the budget. And you can't put in the budget for a year, but we can make contributions and kind of whittle away at that a little bit. Can use the grants.
Yeah, so that you're prepared when that grant comes along to put in your share.
I have to, I just got a message from Ben McInnity, Bruce can't get on Zoom. Says he's blocked.
Does he have the right number?
Does he have the right number?
See if I have his email, I'll send it to him.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. So, I wanted to.
So, it includes things like paving as well and.
Paving.
Kind of infrastructure.
Equipment.
Equipment.
Sidewalks.
Mm-hmm, like a new.
Any big-ticket item that you can't just really cover in one budget season.
We set, I think, 25,000 as like a minimum. So, little stuff below that would not be included.
Gotcha. I mean, it makes sense, so the town isn't whacked with a big expense, you know? It's like a savings account, I guess, right?
Right, right.
And the match, do you have to have the match available before you go for grants? Or is that just part of the process?
Well, it's a good idea if you have it. I mean, I guess you can always borrow, you know, if you have.
They look a lot more favorably not giving you grants when you have that already there. But even the grants, they're few and far between. You wouldn't be able to catch up with using just grants here.
Said he just has a black page with site is blocked, or something else is coming in.
Yeah, tell him I sent him an email.
Okay.
My news, click the link.
His parental control is on.
Should I dive in, or do you want to wait for?
Well, we can keep going.
Oh, okay.
We'll figure it out.
So, one of the first things we talked about was equipment. So, I've set up this Excel worksheet as, so that all the different parts report to a main page. But this is the, this is the behind-the-scenes data of the main page, showing all the equipment that you have, when it was purchased, how much it costs when it was purchased, how old it is, when it needs to be replaced, what it might cost to, best guess on cost to replace it, and then putting in an inflation factor for when it's expected to be replaced. And right now, I guess last year, the select board upped the amount that they're putting in to a fund for equipment to $100,000. If you continue that for a few years, increase it by 25,000 for the next three, and then increase it again by 25,000. That will enable you to replace these three pieces of equipment that are highlighted in pink there without breaking the bank. But there are, you know, Rick has noted that the mower, the tractor mower is in really bad shape and also needs to be replaced. That's currently not in this plan. I think, you know, you probably need to increase the contribution to that fund a little more if you wanted to include that as well. So, this kind of lays out where the money's currently coming from, where it could come from. What's needed, I'll go back to the main page, so you can see what I mean. Spreads out the cost of acquiring these three pieces of equipment. Over the course of this plan, which, so it's capital budget and program, which means it covers, the capital budget is the first year, and then it goes out another five, six years, however long you want. I have it going out six years right now.
Hey.
Excuse me, hi, hi, Betty. We're here.
We're all hot and dry.
Hey, Bruce.
How are you?
Good.
What's going on? Says some.
We're all here.
Contact the site owner to fix the issue.
I don't know, we'll have to talk to Shannon about that.
Is anybody else on Zoom?
No.
No.
Well, Martha is.
Well, Martha, yeah. So, we're just talking.
You can do it this way.
Okay, we're talking about capital budget program here, so. Okay, can you hear okay?
Fine.
Sorry, Martha.
Yeah, it's okay. So, this past year, there was a new 10-wheel dump truck that cost is there, across the top, the 64,570. The next piece of equipment that Rick would like to replace is this 2016 TerraStar dump. The 143 is an estimated cost of what it would, what it would cost to replace it. Down below is one possible source of money. You can get a municipal equipment loan through the state for 75% of the cost up to, I think it's like 150,000. So, I put that in there. I mean, if you don't get it, then you may have to come up with a different source of that funding. And then paying that off, it's a low interest, which is why it's a good thing to try to get.
They're very low interest.
Paying that off over the subsequent five years. And then the greater, it's also a real big-ticket item. At this point, I just have to make assumptions about bank loans and terms. So, I assumed 5% for five years. Hopefully, it would be a little bit better than that. But I figured better assume high than assume low. That then gets paid off also over five years, then another dump truck coming in at fiscal year '31. And then below, you have the beginning balance in that fund, the 100,000 for the next few years increasing, as I was saying. The loan here from the state, the loan from the bank. I made an assumption that that third vehicle would be a lease, you know? The current one, the one just purchased, was purchased through a lease, so that's an option. And that just works it through, showing you what the beginning balance was in the fund, what was added, what came out, and then what that does to the bottom line. And as it is, it's, you'd be in good shape doing those three pieces of equipment. But like I said, you know, a tractor mower is also needed, so. This allows you to look at it and say, okay, we're in good shape, but if we really want to, if we really want to get that tractor mower replaced, then we're going to have to come up with another source of funding or increase the annual contribution.
Try to keep the numbers within reason.
But, yeah, I mean, we're trying to keep it very.
Right, the excavator is very old, but it's not on there to replace right off the bat, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, if it has a good maintenance program, they should.
Escavator runs pretty good. You don't drive down the road, you know, it's trailered and it's, and then it does some ditching, so it's pretty good shape.
So, that's the equipment. I don't know, Rick's big concerns has been paving. So, we've talked about all the areas that could use paving, and they're all listed here. Trying to put them in a rough priority order. I think we keep tweaking that priority order a little bit now and then.
I mean, anybody that drives through town would kind of realize why the stuff jumps around, because most of our paving needs being fixed right now, so they kind of move around a little bit.
Yeah. But the plan right now, one of the plan, I believe, is to pave Quentin Fallon next, followed by High Street and Ranny Street, followed by Depot and a portion of 20 Mile, the worst portion of 20 Mile. And that is, you're expected to be eligible for a grant again in 2027, a paving grant, so the assumption is you would get that grant, which would help a lot.
And those paving grants are only for Class II roads. That's why 20 Mile would fit that bill.
Yeah.
You couldn't use it for High Street, you couldn't use it, you know, so.
And Depot Street. The ones that are highlighted up on the screen, those are all Class II, so they're all eligible for a Class II paving grant. But you don't get them every year, so we're assuming you get them roughly every four years.
And the market for paving is all over the place, so if we can get more of these small roads done in a year, then maybe we can. So, it's not a set-in-stone list of this is the year we're paving that road.
Are there any roads that need some serious subgrade construction drainage?
In Whitesville, that was, that was pretty bad. We did a lot of work there. Quentin Fallon is, I think it needs some work in places, but it actually wasn't as bad as Whitesville. The pavement is, but I don't believe, I don't believe the road base is as bad as Whitesville's. So, and it's not as, you know, as well heavily trafficked with bigger equipment or anything either, so. But no, I think that, I think a lot of the roads in spots are going to need some work, but not a complete road.
I also included on, and I can send you guys this spreadsheet, so you can take your time and look through it.
Sure.
I included that the top two paving projects that were already done. That's what I pulled the data from to make the estimates on the rest of them. Then added an inflation factor on that, so. Jumping back to the main. Just listed them all again. And started off with your, the balance in your paving fund. Currently, there's a $250,000 contribution, annual contribution going into paving fund, which is new. And there is, basically, this plan includes doing a fairly major paving project every year. So, even though it also counts for having a grant come in in 2028, and four years later. Well, actually, this is one area where I think you probably can reallocate after a couple more years some of that funding to equipment, sidewalks, and structures. You'll also probably have to make a little bit of an increase over the first few years, but. Hopefully, I mean, hopefully paving doesn't turn out to be way more expensive than projected. But we've got a good positive line across the bottom, actually increasing. So, I was fairly conservative in reallocating to other funds, just in case. But it's in, it's in good shape, I mean.
That's the one fund that's improving.
Structures, those are the bridges essentially, or small bridges, culverts that are undersized, that need to be, box culverts, basically. There's one 20 Mile stream that doesn't actually need to be replaced, but needs some significant repair, and it's probably going to be a custom design-build type of job, so we don't currently have an estimate for that. I plugged in an amount that would optimize your grant, because you're due for, to get a grant for a structure. You pay 10% on the structure, do you remember 10% on the structure or 20% on the structure?
Maybe 10%.
10%, yeah. So, having a project that's roughly $220,000 is perfect, because then you're maximizing the amount you get from the grant, because they pay 90%. You're paying your match, but you're not having to cover more than that. If you, I mean, they will pay 80% up to 200,000, and then everything after that you have to pay, so. But we don't yet have that estimate. There are hydraulic studies on these other ones. There's three on Cavendish Gulf Road, one on Meadowburg. Those all do, they're all undersized, they all need to be replaced, but you don't currently have. You don't currently have a structure fund, although Rick's thinking the infrastructure.
Community Development and Infrastructure Fund.
Could be used for the annual contributions that would then be used for replacing these structures. And so, this coming year, you're going to need to set aside at least $25,000 to match that grant. Going back to the main.
Back in the 2014 plan, this was all basically the same and laid out similar. The problem is when you have to go through and start doing budget cuts, then you lose the funding for these. So, and then you just, next thing you know, you're 10 years down the road, and you don't have the funding, and you're 10 years behind doing everything.
Now, the Carlton Road Bridge, is that, what kind of shape is that in, do you know? I know it's been through a few major floods.
Right. We do have a report on that. I couldn't quote the report on that, because I don't remember. But it was, it was looked at after the flood. Hydraulically, it does not completely meet what they, what the state requests, but we did put in other grants to look into that one. I haven't heard back from them, but I'm not overly optimistic that that's going to be one of their priorities, but.
So, I, for now, just included 20 Mile and one of the Cavendish Gulf ones in this six- or seven-year time period. Started off until I get confirmation that you want to use the Community Development Infrastructure Fund. Right now, I'm just assuming there is no fund for that, and that you're going to put in the $25,000 match. Okay, yeah. And get a $200,000 grant. But that'll bring you back down to only having $3,000 available, so after that, it'd be good to increase the contribution to $50,000 a year, and that will keep you in pretty good shape when your grant comes in roughly every four years to be able to match it and do a project roughly every four years. The sidewalks, as I mentioned, there was a study done 2010, 2011. This lists all the high-priority sidewalks that need to be repaid, re, in some cases, basically reconstructed in rough priority order. The plan, the 2014 plan called for setting aside $10,000 a year, I believe, into a sidewalk fund, which never got established. So, right now, there's, there's no money for sidewalks. The suggestion is to open that fund with $10,000 in the first year of this, fund it for a couple years at that lower level until you can start switching some of the money over from the paving fund. But even so, I'm going to take the highest priority in our discussions. What we've determined to the highest priority is right outside here, over towards Mac Molding, and then a little bit along the edge of Mac Molding.
From here to like the post office.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we're all getting older, walkable towns, it'll be important.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the cost to do those in 2010 was just over 100,000. It's now up to about 140 by the time. My projection is that you, if you, if you start that fund and fund it at $10,000 for two years, and then up it to 50, that you can do that paving project in six years. But then you'd be another seven years before you could do the next one in Proctorsville, because that's a $338,000 project, projected to be at that time in 2037. So, the 50,000 will get you moving in the right direction towards repairing, replacing the sidewalks, but it's not going to get you there very fast. So, it just matter, you know, what is the community's priority, basically, in terms of getting this done? If, if the community wants to get them done, more of it done sooner, then it would. then it would take more than 50,000, setting $50,000 aside per year to do that.
Martha, do you know is the, the acronym is ICE-T, and they're, uh, it's for basically not, it's federal funding for non-vehicular projects like sidewalks and bike pads. I think we used that when the green was built. So I don't know if that program is still available.
I can look into it.
I don't know if it's around anymore.
Okay.
It was Intermodal Surface Transportation Efficiency Act.
Good memory.
Yeah, that's impressive.
You know, if, if it isn't available under that acronym, there's something out there that took its place.
There absolutely is.
Yeah, I, I will look into additional funding sources outside of just the town funding everything itself.
But even if there is outside funding sources with the money that we would be putting away, would mean we'd get more sidewalks, not two sections in 11 years.
Right.
Because that's, it's a long time to do two small sections.
Yeah.
By that point, you're doing the ones that you just redid in 2010 and, you know, without hitting some of the other ones, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, like I said, if we, this is about the ending balance in the sidewalk fund up there. And. If you do a project in 2030, you can pay for it, you'll have 21,000 left. And then that next project was, what did I say, 338 or something like that? So it'll take another seven years at that rate before you can do another one. Across the bottom, I just added up. The contribute, suggested contributions to all these funds, the equipment, paving sidewalks and structures. With the goal of making it come out steady, that green line at. Pretty much 400,000. Across the board, that, that is possible. And that's kind of the goal, to get to the point where you're not seeing huge spikes in your tax rate or anything, just.
Now, that 400,000, that's like the total, or is that?
That's. That's a total for town contributions to these four funds.
Okay, that's not yearly.
Yes.
Oh, it is yearly?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay. You have any idea what that does to the tax rate, or is it?
Well, right now it's at 350.
Raise it.
Right now, you're putting.
We're already putting in 250.
250 in the paving and 100 in the.
It's not 400 extra.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's only, I mean, right now you're putting, with the equipment in the paving, you're putting aside 350. So it's a boost to get to, from there to 400 and then just try to keep it steady.
Right.
For a while. So that's.
And nothing's getting cheaper.
Right. That's it in a nutshell for now. We gotta work on water and sewer still, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Not I.
Okay.
Basically, it's just all scary numbers. It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, and there's a lot of need.
Right.
But we have to start somewhere, so people after us are in better shape, pretty much.
Yeah, you gotta keep the talent running and roads is what it is. Alrighty, we can, uh, let's go to item six, discuss draft subdivision regulations. Um, I did say set a date for the next open forum. I don't know if the board is ready to do that yet, so we'll leave that up to the board. We have some more discussion to do. So I think the last meeting, we had concerns about affordability. Of getting a survey and a full septic design. I think there's, did you guys get the, from Jason?
Yes.
Permit and license information?
Yes.
So I think there's a way, it looks like, to have subdivision regulations without having to have a full-blown septic design and all that. And I, I know that you had, uh. Uh, Maureen, you had mentioned, uh, talking about Holly subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I, um, I actually, that was sort of led to me, I did call around, because Miguel had asked about, you know, some pricing. It's not a one-size-fits-all for a subdivision by any means. There's so many factors. So I spoke to one engineer who did not want me to name him, who's doing a project in a neighboring town. It's a three-lot subdivision. Including, uh, where they're at for septic design, including, um, you know, the test pits and everything else. The maps, the boundaries and, and everything that's included in a, a zoned town. Basically what we're asking for right now is, as written for a major subdivision. The cost to the applicant right now is, is pushing $15,000 and they're not done.
That's for the whole subdivision?
Correct.
At how many lots?
There is three lots.
Three lots.
But there is not, they haven't even broke ground yet. This is just for the septic design. You know, this does not include a system or anything like that, so. Um, it also does not include attorney's fees if there's an HOA. It does not include if they need like a wetland specialist or anything like that. You know, a standalone septic system now, um, he said is running, it can run around $5,000. So just, you know, that's, that's sort of the information he gave me.
Okay.
Which, uh, the other person I spoke to. Who is a, a surveyor. The one difficulty that he, that we had talked about is in developing this sort of plan. There are a lot of things that are subjective, where personal agendas and things can get in the way of a project moving forward. So it's very important to, to formulate something that is, that sort of takes that out.
Personal agendas from, you know.
From us, from board members to neighbors to, to whatever.
Right.
So having a well-drafted plan is going to prevent problems down the road.
I think having a full board too, so that helps.
Working on it.
Because there's always going to be disagreements, which is, you know, there should be.
Yeah.
As long as it's not like personal. So. So I, I think, I mean, maybe there's a way for like minor subdivisions. I think Mount Holly, I did. Print these up.
Did you print it?
Yeah, printed out, there's waivers.
Yeah, well, yeah, let me just finish my thought here, so, I'm sorry. So the one other thing, and, and in fact, this engineer that I talked to, he's the one that mentioned, uh, the Mount Holly, because Mount Holly does not have zoning. I did not have time today to talk to anybody from Mount Zarning, I, or Mount Holly. I would love to hear, uh, because this has been in effect for 20 years.
Right.
For them. So I would love to hear if it's working, if it's not working. You know, any sort of feedback from them, because they're basically our neighbors next door.
That's right.
They do have a section in there that really addresses what, what my issue was with, with raw land. That, you know, you can put a restriction into the deed that says, okay, you can subdivide your land. It's not going to be a cost to the landowner that is selling, but it will be a cost to the person when they develop that land.
Right. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
I mean, it still, it still requires a survey, which.
It does.
You shouldn't get it anyway, I mean, eventually you're going to have to get one.
Yes, so without talking to them, it looks like it's a stu, a, a two-step plan. So you basically, you present your plan, your sketch plan to the board. And I don't know if it's, you know, just drawn on a piece of paper, and then the board would say, okay, this looks great, I think you should do this, I think you should do that. And then they would go spend their money on, on the rest, on perfecting that plan and coming back. So they would, the board would essentially. Advise you if it was a minor or a major subdivision and then, you know, and move forward from there, instead of spending all the money on the front end.
Right. I think a sketch plan could be very basic. I mean, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you, you could, the homeowner could do it themselves with all the, you know, available online. And then if it looks good to the planning commission.
You see any pitfalls anymore?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And you know, whether that involves, and it probably should involve a site visit.
Yeah.
Just to get everything full circle, but it takes that initial cost away from the applicant.
Right.
Rick, that happens when people are thinking about doing projects, that they will come to you and say, this is what I want to do, do you have any thoughts on it? Did you?
Right now, alls we have is like building permits and access permits. That's kind of all we really have and go by, and they're pretty vague.
I don't know, that, does this, that we've been working on preclude doing something like that? Talking to a board and saying, this is what I have in mind, what do you think before I make my expenditures? Does this preclude doing something like that?
No, I don't think so, I mean, they would just come, come in.
Right.
You know, with their sketch plan and, you know, very informal.
I'm wondering if this is different from the Mount Holly.
Oh, what we have? It is, it is a little different, but I, I mean, like I said, I was, I was led to the Mount Holly. Format by the engineer that I talked to. That said they do it two-step, because my concern really was with the upfront cost to just even walk in the door and present a plan to the board. So. You know, this seems like a better path, but.
Is there a history about doing that sort of thing? A builder coming in and talking around an idea? You know, maybe with a sketch and then saying, and then.
Absolutely. I don't know if there's a history, but absolutely that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a normal, I mean, it could be a very normal procedure, saying, is there any, is, do you see anything wrong with, you know, this plan in this area off, offhand? Or something like that, I mean.
From what I remember, years ago, there was a development proposed in the sand pit on 20 Mile Street. And they had a sketch plan. At first it was like 20 lots, and everybody's like, oh no! And then the engineer just flips over the page, and it was like 10.
That's funny.
Yeah, it was like, you know, showmanship. It's like, oh, okay. So, I mean, there's that, but I, I prefer, you know, very informal.
So is there something in a phrase or something that we should include in this that, that talks about just coming to the board and with an idea?
Well, I mean. Yeah, the, um. Well, I don't have the page right here. Mount Holly's basically got a, uh, and I would like to talk to somebody there, or, or somebody. You know, just to see if it's working for them, because it is, it is an older plan. If it's, if it needs to be updated, if there's been issues. But they do address that, like it's, you, you get on the agenda for a planning commission meeting with your sketch and your review. And then the planning commission, from what I understand, would say if it's a major or a minor, and give you feedback, and then you move on from there. So it sounds very simple to me. But, um, again, I, I'm, I don't know. I just, it would be nice to talk to somebody and see how, how they do it and if it actually works for them.
Right. Well, for a minor subdivision, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, I think we're just requiring them submitting a sketch plan. I don't even believe they'd have to go to the select, or the planning commission?
It would be your review.
The administrative officer.
Yeah. And if there are any red flags or anything, then maybe it would go. They would determine, the administrative officer would determine whether it's a minor or a major.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And maybe that's where it starts.
Right. Yep. Martha, do you have any input on this, or I know you, you're coming in late to it, but.
Yeah, I mean, my, before I worked for Mark, I worked for the town of West Windsor as their zoning administrator and then their town administrator. And so I was involved in the creation of subdivision regulations and, and watched them in action. Theirs are fairly complex because they have the resort there. So they had to have something that had a lot of elastic in the waist in case something came by with like 50 units or something. But could also be shrunk down to deal with the two or three lot subdivision. So they do have multiple phases. They have a sketch plan, preliminary and final plan. For that purpose, so someone can come in, maybe they take in an existing, um, survey and made a copy of it, and they're just drawing on it, you know? We want to put this here, and we want, you know, sketch lines in. And what do you think before they spend a lot of money getting a whole new plan? So, I mean, I think that does make sense.
Right, I think, you know, it can be an educational thing too for folks. It's like, okay, where's your drainage going? We're concerned that, you know, we don't want to drain water from your property onto other people's property. You know, that could cause damage, and I've seen it. Where people, you know, subdivisions change the drainage patterns, and all of a sudden, it ends up in someone's basement. Happens more than you think. Up on Okemo. All those houses up there, some of them actually have flood insurance. Because nobody thought about drainage on that steep hill. And, you know, the last storm or the last hurricane went right through people's basements. Finished basements, you know, a lot of gases from thousands of. But nobody thought, you know, nobody thought about that back in the early 2000s, you know? You just go ahead and do it.
Flat enough, let's put a place.
Yeah. So.
So do we need to have somebody come and talk to us, or are you going to go to?
I mean, I, I mean, you know, I'm, I, I'm happy to reach out to Mount Holly. I just like, and I can copy everybody on all communications. I just, you know, having this discussion, I want to make sure we're all on the same page and, uh. I just want to make it simple and affordable for people that are trying to divide the land.
Right, and protect neighboring property.
And protect neighboring properties. You've got older people, that's the only asset they have, they may want to stay in their home. And sell off some of their property and, and they shouldn't have to bear and it, and, you know, a huge expense to do so.
Right.
And we also need our people to stay here.
That's for sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the cost of construction going up, it's.
Well.
Yeah, it's a problem, yeah.
But as far as that original sketch phase that you guys, that you're talking about? I mean, I think that's a great idea, but shouldn't, wouldn't it be best going in front of the planning commission? Not just one sole person, so you can have a lot more eyes on it before it's just one person saying, yep, this looks good.
Well, that seems to be what Mount Holly does. It's not an administrator, it comes to the commission.
I kind of.
And the commission determines if it's a minor or a major, and then, I, I think.
I mean, I like that model.
You have enough to do, right?
I wasn't trying to pass it on to anybody, but we're hoping to reach to pass it on to.
Planning commission would be the administrator. I think that's, well, we discussed that last meeting, but.
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem with. I mean, I don't have a problem with every, you know, coming into the planning commission, even for a minor.
Right.
What do you think, Bruce?
Proceed.
Yes, sir.
We've, through the years, with years gone by with the planning commission, we'd have a couple of people that would come in. One I remember the most was Joseph Igaliel with the winery. Were you, were you involved with that?
I don't think so. I don't remember.
Well, Joe, Joe needed our blessing to proceed with Act 250. But Joe would come in and he conceptualized what he wanted to do. And then he'd say, can I do it? And we said, you're not giving us anything but verbiage, you know? You haven't presented any sort of a plan. And I'm not saying, and at that time he said, we're not looking for engineering drawings necessarily. We're just looking for how you wanna locate it on the site, a preliminary. Then we'll tell you, yeah, you know, you can go, you can proceed. But on the other hand, he didn't have to because he could have proceeded without us. Do you understand what I mean? Which he ultimately did. Uh, I mean, of course he got us building, you know, and, but it, it took a while. But when, when the people come in and they want to go forward with the project and they're asking for our blessing, like we're clergy or something, um, it doesn't work. We have to have something we can, we can, uh, look at and question. So that's the only thing I wanted to say about some of the ideas that we'll put forth in this meeting.
Right. And I think if, like, for the sketch plan requirement, we have a list of, there would be a list of where, you know, where the houses might go. Rough property lines, roads, things like that.
I'm fine with that, with, with, with things like that. Later on, um, things could get, uh, get firmed off a need base.
Sure.
And you don't need just one meeting. You could have two or three in, if you, if it seems like there are changes. You know, you could just revise it until you're getting ready to, uh, make the big decision.
On, um, on, uh, multi, uh, multiple parcels or parcels that are going to be dividing into four, uh, four lots. Did, did you talk about, about surveys on that? We going to require them or not?
Only it would, you don't have to, like for a minor, you wouldn't have to necessarily get a survey. But it would be written, say if you're gonna subdivide off a piece of land. It would be written in the deed. Oh, no, I, well, that's, yeah, that's only for septic.
You would have to have a survey if you subdivide your land.
Yeah.
There's no way around that.
Right. I mean, after, like if it's a minor, um, I guess that would occur once they, well, when they do the final plan. Like we would give our okay and then they would go hire the engineer or whatever to.
Well, the, the difference was, there's one thing, there's, doing the survey, the perimeter survey and dividing it is one thing. But doing the infrastructure and the septic and where the, where's the house going? And where's the buffer and all of that other stuff is totally, uh, a different thing. So that, I think what we're talking about would be classified in a major subdivision?
Uh, if it's over.
You have it as two right now, but I would do, I would do three or four lots.
Yeah.
To classify as a major.
Right. I think three is, I think Mount Holly was three as a minor and then four. Yeah, that's fair. I guess also too, um, you could, um, a problem I could foresee, say if somebody has like three acres and they wanna divide it into, or two acres, whatever, pick a number, they wanna divide it into three lots, then there would be small lots. If you don't know where your septic is, you know, that's a small area to, you know, that's a small lot and you may not have, uh, a place to perk or you'd have to do like a pre-treatment center, which could get a system, which would get. Right. I, I, what I'm thinking of is like pre-planning. Like say if somebody comes in and they're unaware and they have like a three lot subdivision on a small. It's like, well, you really ought to see if the land perks before you spend all this money. At least do perk tests, but.
And that, I guess, would be up to us, right?
Well, it would be a recommendation.
Right.
You know, if that ever came up, which it could.
Yeah.
Right. But no, you're absolutely right. The state controls.
Yes.
How you septic and water supply and all that.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be honestly an issue for, for us to determine that.
No.
Engineers.
That's right. Right.
So I, I honestly feel that's a mechanism that's already in place with the state.
Right.
You know, and if it's something that's in the village, they're not gonna have a septic anyways, most likely.
No, they can't. I believe, right, Rick? I mean, if you're in the village, don't you have to hook onto Townsor? Yeah.
Have there, um, Rick, have there been any divisions of like what he's talking about? Say somebody just got three to five acres that divided up into three separate lots? That tight?
Not that small. But I could see where you could run into a problem. Say you, say somebody sub-divided and then they built a house even on larger acres of land. But their only place that they had to put their septic was, you know, close to the next lot, which is still owned by them, cause it's all, so, but then the next person comes in and buys that lot. And where are they gonna put their septic in their, or their well? If it's close to that, they can because of that two hundred foot.
But is there anything that you're aware of that is an example of that that we have in town right now?
Not that I'm aware of. Okay. Any other discussion? So we'll just, well, that's, we'll wait to hear from you.
I am happy to, I will reach out to Mount Holly and report back. I just wanna see what's working and what's not.
I'm curious if they've had to amend theirs too, you know? What did they start out with versus?
Yeah, well, this is, I printed, this is their res-, this, you know, it says it's approved in ninety, uh, stamped two thousand, but March ninety-eight, so.
So they haven't really amended it much?
Yeah, and, you know, having worked with this that long, I'm sure there may be things that they need to. Or, you know, I'd be interested to hear.
Lot of things have changed over that twenty-five years, so. Land that was not buildable is now the prime buildable land because all the prime buildable land is not, is gone. Or not all of it, but that's for sure. Well, also too with the invention of these new septic systems, you know, the pre-treatments. There's land that can be developed now that never could be thirty years ago. Okay.
Do we wanna try to set a date or no? We wanna keep working on this document?
Yeah, it's still a rush, right? I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
Okay.
Yeah, let's spend some time on it and then probably is a good idea to have a open forum, I guess, the next. Maybe we do it in April again or March, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Might season.
Yeah. Well, plus it's, I think, tough to get people out in February. Yeah. Okay, so we're done with that? Okay. Old business, new business. The only thing I have that'll be coming down the pike is a flood hazard review, Carlton Road. Could be two. Oh, two. Okay. But there'd be public hearings. Public hearings. Yeah, we'll have a public hearing for the mill on, um, Carlton Road. Basically they wanna raise the building seven feet. And put an elevator in the bottom, parking and elevator. So I got two, two, two of these flood, um, building permits in the la-, probably last month and a half, two months. And the first part of this process is to send it to the state for review. They have thirty days to review it. I have not heard back from them on either one of them. So they must not have much to comment on at this point. Uh, so now we have to have the public, you know, the public hearing on these. And I mean, everybody's jumping at the, this was a year and a half ago. These things take a lot of time, but, um, we're not holding them up. We just, we're right on schedule, but it does seem like it's a razor way. So I think, I don't see why you couldn't do two in one night. I mean. Sure. I'm surprised the state hasn't commented. I'm surprised. They had a lot of comments on the Carlton Road beforehand. Right. Um, we, we went through that for months and, and then the, the firm that's doing that feels like they've done everything required and then I, so I sent it back, um, to the state for review and there was no more, there was no comments to it. So I'm guessing that they satisfied all their, what they had originally for comments. Hey, it's changed a lot. That project has changed a lot. Originally they wanted to move it closer to the river, which just doesn't really fly.
Really?
So I think they're in a good place and they, they would, um, well, we'll have to have the review on it, but I can get those permits to everybody, but, I mean, you have to be one foot above the base flood elevation and that's pretty high. And there's another one that's on Depot Street that we'll do and that's the same thing. They're gonna be raising it six, or seven or eight feet as well. Wow. Okay. Alrighty, uh, review correspondence, uh, nothing. I'd have made discuss any other business PC members may have. Okay, so Ed, you're interested maybe joining the planning commission?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Glad to have you aboard if you want.
Yeah, I've, uh, I've been here now for a little over a year back in Cavendish and, uh, we spoke first, I think that last meeting when you guys presented it to the town for the subdivision requirements. We spoke a little bit then, but I had a lot going on and I was like, I just, I couldn't make any type of real commitment at the time, but I think, uh, speaking with Maureen and, you know, I've spoken to Miguel a few times. I thought maybe it might be a good, good time to, you know?
Yeah. It's a pretty typical meeting.
Yeah.
Try to get done by eight. You know, everybody's busy.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess if you wanna join, you just go to the select board. I'll certainly recommend you. I don't know if you need a letter? We get the, we get the email, um, fixed. So if I get the email with, with a letter, I can, you know, present that before, or have them aware before the meeting. Then we'll, they'll discuss it at the meeting. That way I'll be on the agenda for Monday. I would, I would put that first for you, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get you a letter, you know, tomorrow probably.
Yep. Great.
Great.
Great. Okay, any other business? All right, motion to adjourn.
Can I so move?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion is passed.
Okay.
Great.